The opinions expressed in this program are not those of CISA VII or Time Warner Cable.
What's your tomorrow?
I'd like to ask Andrew to read the mission statement.
We educate all students to be college, career, and community ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse world.
Thank you, Andrew. Next is our open forum. This is a time for members of the community to speak before the board. Is there anyone who would like to speak before the board this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to roll call. Sandy?
Jeffries?
Here.
Thor?
Here.
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 All seven board members are present tonight. I'm joined to my left by Dr. Michelle Langenfeld, our superintendent. At the end of the table are two intercity student council members. Luli Martinez-Cruz and McKenna Arnoldi. Luli's from Preble. She's our president. And McKenna?
East. That's okay.
Sorry.
I made that mistake.
I know. I have it right here.
Go Red Devil.
I should stick to my notes.
With the reading glasses?
I know. You know, the last two were from that other school. And McKenna's from John Dewey Academy. And also at the table is Sandy Heller, who's our board executive assistant. I would entertain a motion to approve the following minutes. Regular board meeting, February 15th. Special board meeting, February 29th. Special board meetings, closed sessions, February 15th and March 7th.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And then we have no communications to be placed on file this month. And I would entertain Katie's motion.
I would like to move that we move the item B1 under the superintendent's update to the next item. So moved. In deference to guests that we have. Oh, you moved it. I'll second it.
Sandy, is any comments or questions? Sandy?
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Thor?
Aye.
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 All right. So we will now move to the early college presentation. It's under the superintendent's update.
Well, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm sitting on the floor here. I'm going to scoot up a bit. Tonight, we have an opportunity to talk about a lot of the work that's been going on behind the scenes around a concept of early college. And if you look at the PowerPoint, we put it in quotes because it doesn't have an official name yet. It is not a model dropped in. But it's really looking at dual credit opportunities for all of our students. And I'd like to invite Dr. Gary Miller, who's here tonight, chancellor from UWGB, to join me. And also Lori Sedek, our president of learning at NWTC as well. Our conversation tonight is really intended to provide background information about why we would be talking about early college. And really getting into the what and kind of conversations that we've been having. As we look at our own students and look at the future for our community and the work that we've been engaging in. So, that being said, I'm going to ask Lori to talk a little bit about why early college. And we say that loosely again because it's not necessarily a model, but it's as we move forward. And then we'll talk a little bit about next steps.
Hi. Good afternoon, everyone. So I'm going to address just what I typically call the perfect storm. Which I think is a good way to outline why an early college model for these three educational organizations to partner together with. One thing that we know is education serves to provide upward social mobility for individuals through improved personal economic gain. We also know that education is a driver to ensuring a skilled and sufficient workforce. However, our perfect storm exists, which is identified on your slides. We have unemployment rates which are declining in an economy. That's not a bad thing, but that means there's not sufficient supply of workers out there. Baby boomers right now are retiring at a faster pace than they ever have. Our economy is shifting. Meanwhile, in Wisconsin, while we have the largest amount of baby boomers retiring every day. We also have a shrinking working age population. That's our perfect storm. So it's critically important that we ensure that more students are coming immediately out of high school to acquire some post-college training beyond high school. We have to do that in order to ensure that we have a sufficient and a skilled workforce for Wisconsin. Just to give you a sense of the shift that's occurring. Many years ago, the typical outline of jobs for our economy had 60% of the jobs in our economy were unskilled labor. 20% were skilled labor and 20% were professional. That has shifted today. We are now at 68% skilled labor. We remain at 20% tech professional. And the remainder is the unskilled. Our US economy and our Wisconsin economy cannot afford for us to have people going out into the workforce without sufficient skills. Especially in the rapidly changing technology of today. So, why early college? Well, why early college is so that we can produce a sufficient workforce supply. Also to ensure that we have the right number of individuals acquiring post-secondary credentials. And also ensuring that we're reducing cost and time for our students to acquire those post-secondary credentials. And it's really a speed to market strategy for education to help build the economy. Looking at why early college model and opportunities. We know that getting a post-secondary credential leads to greater lifetime earnings. We know that it lowers unemployment and it lowers poverty. Our Green Bay community needs us to partner in ways that help support that effort. We also know that early college offers a design in which educational partners can make full use of the human potential in our Green Bay communities. And we also know there exists a disparity in educational outcomes for minority and low-income individuals. And early college models have plenty of evidence through literature and research to show it's a design that works to address all three of those issues. So, we want an early college model so that we can bring college into the high school for every student. We want to expose every student in the high school to college opportunities through dual credit offerings. Want to make sure that we're preparing all students in the Green Bay school system for college, career, and community. We want to ensure that we have all students supported through all the services that would be provided in an early college model. This is more than just putting curriculum together. This is more than just putting pathways together. This is three organizations working together to wrap everything around and really create that college-going culture for all of the students in the Green Bay schools.
As we think about moving forward, I think the students in early college are perhaps better prepared. And we'll talk a little bit about that as well.
Yeah. I think as noted on this slide, there's a great deal of evidence in literature. We know that students who participate in early college, any of those dual credit opportunities are more likely to complete at a higher rate than their demographically similar peers. They are more likely to score proficiently on state tests. They're more likely to be insured rigorous and relevant instruction. And we do know that graduation rates are increased and students do increase enrollment at a higher rate than other students directly into college. And we also know, why would we want an early college model? It's really success. Students in dual credit are 2.2 times more likely than other students to enroll in two and four-year. And I think it's really important to understand that this early college design is about a pathway that provides students choices and options for their career moving past high school. It's really about creating a pathway that they can transition seamlessly from organization to organization and acquire the post-secondary training that they need. So this slide just really represents students that are in early college graduate high school. 90% of the students in early college graduate high school, which exceeds the national rate of 78%. And I think we're seeing early progress even in the early dual-credit academies that we've started in partnership. Students that are earning dual credit see college as a part of their future. So I think we're witnessing it ourselves based on our early design.
As we think about this partnership, I have to share with you that Dr. Raffin had approached us some time ago and had the opportunity to do a lot of thinking. And it had a lot to do with the work that we've been doing through Achiever on County. I think Dr. Raffin has a clear understanding of our mission, as does Dr. Miller, to educate every child to be college, career, and community ready, inspired to succeed. And so as we started to engage in this conversation and bring key folks to the table, we have a list of the people who have been at the table engaging in this conversation. And I don't know, Dr. Miller, if you would have some comments to talk about the partnership just a little bit.
Thank you. I'm delighted to be here. I've been in town 18 months and I believe this is the first time I've had a chance to visit with this board. I do know that one of the reasons Georgia and I were attracted to Green Bay was because of the quality of the schools and innovative leadership there. So, thank you. There's no question that if we are going to meet the talent needs in Wisconsin and this region. And if we're going to support this community and support student success, that these three organizations have to work together to ensure that every student who is capable can get post-secondary education. Everything Lori said is what we know at the end of this process as well. Students engaged in dual enrollment programs or who are engaged in discussions about post-secondary education early in their careers do better on every metric. They have a higher success and they generally stay in the community and are more contributing students. So, the challenge with getting students into post-secondary degrees, associates and bachelor's degrees, is always in the transitions. That's between grammar school and middle school and high school and technical school, college and university. And so I think our commitment to each other in this partnership is to work really hard on those transitions by developing a model that sort of melds those and takes on this issue together. I'm very excited about it. It's very, there are very few communities I've lived in where this commitment is as strong. And I think that we will see some success. I would just say that we, about half of the top 20 highest-paying jobs in the country didn't exist about 15 years ago. And when we graduate a student at UWGB now, we expect that student to have somewhere between 12 and 15 jobs before they're in their mid-30s. Most of those jobs, at least three-quarters of them, haven't been invented yet. And all of them will require different kinds of technology that are now emerging. Students that are not involved in a college culture early in their educational experience in their communities where there's a lot of support for this will have a difficult time adjusting to this kind of entrepreneurial career culture that we expect these all students to have. And so that's why this is really exciting to us because we can, we cannot imagine doing that without this entire partnership. And so I, I'm very happy to be involved in it. We've spent a lot of time on it. My provost is very much involved in it. We've just assigned three other people to work on this, on the action team that's in place right now. And we expect that it'll be a model for other communities to look at around the country and in Wisconsin. So thank you for having us and thank you for your support of this idea.
Thank you. We've had the opportunity to work with the provost, Dr. Greg Davis, who is a former West High School grad.
Right.
And a UWGB grad and has quite a resume. So, when we think about this conversation around early college, I think it really, as someone said to me, really starts to operationalize our mission here. If we create a college-going culture right here, we're all high stu, all of our high school students in Green Bay area public schools enroll and eventually compete, complete a post-secondary credential. We've done our, we've done our work. And I think that the piece that really we've had great conversations around as a team is all means all. I think sometimes, and we'll look at the next piece of data, that you can see that we have a number of students engaging in our current opportunities, either dual credit or AP and IB. And you can see that approximately by the numbers, we have about roughly 600 students who have taken advantage of that, which means approximately 900 of our graduates have not of the opportunities we have. And I'm understanding we have upward of about 100 opportunities for kids to get involved either through AP or IB. So, I think that that was one of the compelling things that said, are we reaching all students? And if not, why not? And can we improve on that? And I think that's, that we decided we could. My goal with these slides is to just give you an overview of the impetus of why we are getting engaged and the importance of what it can have for all students and the impact it can have. And I think that the piece that I would like to offer to the board is we'd like to bring a lot more data back to you in partnership with, you may want to know how many students actually need remediation and some of the data sets that are really out there that really compel us even deeper. And we haven't even gotten to all of that data. We know it's there. So, this next slide really looks at dual credit totals. And again, you can see that we had 428 students earn 2,200 credits roughly. We had 65 students who earned 15 or more credits. And that was a total of 1684. That means out of all the credits, roughly 4,000, almost 40-some percent were actually gained by 65 students. So, we've got students, as somebody said, who kind of either happen in or dabble in. And others who actually, and if you can see in the next slide, really shows you that their focus is, the AP students seem to be able to gain the most credits. And that would tell you that certain students really know how to gain credits. And I know that I had earned credits or earn at least the possibility of credits. We know that not all AP, IB, or credits transfer. And we have to be realistic. I think one of the things that we have to recognize and really understand is that in some cases, it could be cost savings, but it's also the rigorous coursework that's required to even prepare for the assessments in AP and IB. Or also the rigorous coursework expected around any kind of college course that we're looking for as much as. Because we know, and it goes to that next level of, are students prepared? And do they have the ability and the perseverance to actually take on a college-going environment and be successful? So, we're looking at perseverance data. We don't have that from the National Clearinghouse, but that's something that we're very interested in as well. And those are the kinds of data sets that we'd like to bring back to get deeper into this conversation just around the data pieces. When you look at our current reality around our graduation and where our students are, this is from the National Student Clearinghouse. We had last year out of the graduating class, 870 students out of the approximately 1,500 go on to post-secondary. And recognizing that, we know that there's plenty of room to ensure that more students move forward. And so to that end, that's really the efforts and the communication right now that we've been talking about in terms of why we would be doing this. You know, if we're going to reduce the number of remedial courses, that's an important piece. You hear about it often, that the high school students are going on to colleges and they're not prepared to take on the rigor of college courses. And so to shore up that connection is a really important piece of our discussion. Another piece that we envision for our students is to look at what it would take to really root them into a college mindset. And our goal overall, our vision would be 15 college credits. That don't have to necessarily be tied to a pathway. I think that there's always that concern, if I get stuck in a pathway, will that, you know, narrow my opportunities? And I don't think anyone sitting at this table, and you can argue with me differently, has any intention of ensuring that every child leaves here and either goes to a technical college or a four-year college. Our plan is to open the world and show folks that they have students and families, that they have opportunities that perhaps they hadn't thought about. And so part of the resources and supports that we plan to put in place is to really ensure that students can transition and to really support them in sufficient financial supports for counseling and support so that at the end of the day, the barriers that a lot of our families see right now in relationship to college enrollment and completion no longer exist. It's to break down those barriers as well. I think that the piece as we look forward to it, I mean always, is to really ensure that successful transition. And really provide whatever additional resources are needed. And we're in conversation, in very early conversation about what that looks like and how that can come to be. So that every, every student has the opportunities that they deserve to be a college-bound student. We're looking at a system as to how we can share data. That's always an interesting time with FERPA and data privacy. But really looking at those kinds of components and how we work collectively together to ensure that that enrollment in college is right immediately after graduation if possible. So, that's kind of our overarching vision and mission for our work. And I think the other piece that I would, I would look for is, we, and Dr. Miller referenced the implementation team. Right now, we're very much into talking about, oh, how do you implement this? And I think that our focus has been to go slow, to go fast. What we want to do is make sure that how we strategically plan is to really identify our goals and our metrics, action steps, and focus right early on in terms of what those transition services might be and how we can provide real hands-on, work-based learning experiences, looking for measurable outcomes, timelines, and so forth. And get that data sharing agreement into place and a communication plan and so forth. So, this is not anywhere near what it's going to be. But it's those early conversations that we face our current reality and say, how can we actually operationalize the mission for this district and partner with our higher ed partners to ensure that every child has opportunity? And it certainly aligns with our core values around equity and engagement and excellence as well. So, at this time, I know you've seen the slides and we aren't going to read them all to you, but we welcome questions from you.
Yes. Thank you for that presentation. We've talked often at this table about pathways and partnerships, and this is certainly a wonderful example. We should talk a little bit about how we get our students engaged in this process. I think we would all agree that if we get students thinking about this in high school, it's too late. So, talk a little bit about, you know, starting, you know, maybe late elementary, middle schools, and how we get kids engaged in thinking about life beyond their high school diploma.
You want to start? Sure. I know that one of our conversations is just that. If we wait till high school, for many students, it's just not in a good place. We've, we know that by law in Wisconsin, starting next fall, each student will have an academic career plan put into place. And so that's part of our conversation. But we also know that if we afford students as early as elementary and a mindset around and engage families in the discussion, that there are opportunities for your students, there are opportunities for your children when they enter the Green Bay area public schools to pursue pathways, to pursue a college-going environment. And we'll help you get there. So even as early as young, they may not know which direction they want to go. And goodness knows, as Dr. Miller mentioned, we don't know the careers that are out there tomorrow that we're preparing students today for. But we do know that perseverance and a lot of those key characteristics and qualities need to be instilled in our students. And I think the other piece, as we start to look at elementary as well, is really starting to talk about things and think about things differently. And the whole conversation has to shift to that mindset that every child should be afforded opportunity and access. And it isn't just for some, but for all. And I think that sometimes we just even, you hear it when, if you go over to Fort Howard, for example, that whole notion of growth mindset. It's kind of changing that whole thinking sometimes about who gets to and who doesn't. And I always say to teachers and to myself, you know, whose child would I want to limit? I wouldn't want it for my own. I want everything, you know, opportunity for every single child, so.
I would add, I think the exciting opportunity in this work, as I mentioned, this is more than just putting curriculum together. This is a holistic approach. It is about beginning early on, working with families, which is really exciting to me. You have a lot of parents of children who didn't have the own hope in themselves that they were college-going capable. And we have an opportunity to change that too. And the more that we can influence families and engage families and children early, I think a lot of it is about instilling hope and working in a way that we're not out there competing as higher ed organizations, but really working together and collectively to ensure that we have all of the right experiences that we can ladder and build all the way through elementary into middle. Because you're absolutely correct. This doesn't start when you're a freshman or a sophomore in high school. This begins deep in the ground. And it's really about just kind of creating the atmosphere by which it's an expectation and a will, not a maybe or an if.
Have you talked about strategies of how you engage families? That's a little more difficult. You've got the students right there in school. It's a little bit more of a challenge to engage their family.
Well, and I think I'll lean back to what Michelle mentioned earlier is, we're early in this process. So, we're in, we're out discovering where other organizations like us have done some similar work in trying to discover and learn from the strengths that they've brought. But there are some really nice examples out there of people who are doing these elements. I think the trick is to not go out and think you're going to find a magic pill that applies to this community. So it's really trying to find the right strategies and solutions that work for Green Bay. And I think we still have some discovery to do, to get there.
Thank you.
I appreciate the presentation and really support everything in terms of additional opportunities and particularly the idea of helping everyone understand that their horizons are broader than what they might have thought. I have a question about one of the shared goals, and it's on the second page where it was continued. It says, "Work collectively to ensure that all high school graduates enroll in college the year of his or her graduation." What does that say to the student like myself, who takes a two-year hiatus to work for Uncle Sam or decides to travel or maybe doesn't want to go to college at all? They've had the opportunity to enroll and we've given them all the supports necessary. But does that mean that, you know, I'm a failure because I didn't enroll the year of my graduation?
Well, we, we know, and of course, we're open to any rephrasing of that. But we do know that we have a much better chance of affecting an outcome in post-secondary education if we get them that soon. And it's, it's a huge chance. Obviously, people who make choices to go into the military and so forth are still... Obviously, people who make choices to go into the military and so forth are still in the realm of post-secondary education because they're getting education. And one of the things we're working on very hard at the university, just as an aside with that regard, is back transferring those experiences into the transcripts, which many universities in the country do really well at, including the one I was at before here. So I think the reason it's phrased that way is because that's where you get the best result. I think clearly there will be students who choose, after having been in a college culture and this kind of a model, to not get post-secondary education. And we certainly support those people as citizens. But just as an outcome, we know that if we can get them in that first year, we have a much better chance of that they will succeed and we'll get them a degree. So that's the reason it was presented that way. But it does alert us to think about how we write these things, because certainly we do embrace everybody's choice in there.
Chris?
Thank you. I also concur. We've been talking about K through 16 education for a while, and it seems like this may be a step there. And much of the presentation, I appreciate, though, I think you probably know you're preaching to the choir on this one, at least by us sitting here. Now, one thing I noticed in there, we talked about graduation rates going up to 90 percent. Our district, for youngsters that stay with us, already is in the 90 percent. Okay, so that, but it's a matter of, in my mind, getting that hooked to make sure they go on with their education. That's a real plus for me, should this come to fruition and actually work. Now, I'm not quite as, wait, I know a lot of things we do in the district, and I'm not asking for an answer right now, I'm just sharing a concern. And Mr. Black, I mentioned, you know, all the kids younger. My background is secondary. I'm worried about what we're going to do with those kids that come in from the outside that are credit deficient and not on grade level. I know what we're trying to do as a district, but I want to see later is what folks like you are going to be doing at your level to help us at this point in time to get them ready. And then a question out of curiosity, the 40-60 split, especially after 40 percent T C, 60 percent four-year college, and I heard you say, we still have about a 20 percent need for professional-level training. So I am just curious where that came from.
Can I address the credit deficient to start?
Sure.
I guess I just want to offer, to me, some of the most exciting work. I work at an organization that is intended as mission to be open access. So our measure of success for students is that every student will complete their credential regardless of their level of preparedness when they come to us. So I think that that mission and that open access purpose matches very well with what you're identifying as a challenge we will face together. And I think there's some really great strengths in both what the Green Bay Public School system is doing to address those challenges as they come in the district, and there's some great strengths to be leveraged at NWTC that could set students up for success, to succeed with us, but then go beyond us to UWGB. I think we're a conduit there. We've got some great methods we're using in Career Pathway Bridge. So these are individuals who are coming to us without a high school diploma, and we are putting them through accelerated developmental education and college-level courses at the same time and achieving success. And these individuals are completing credentials in a multitude of technical diplomas and associate degrees. So it's possible, and many come to us without appropriate English language skills. So I think taking the creative and innovative methods that we're using to address both sides of that coin are going to be ways that we're going to try and find solutions to those strategies. So I think it's possible, absolutely.
I actually think it's absolutely necessary. I would just say that somewhere in the neighborhood of 67 percent of our graduating class every year are people with no experience, from families with no experience in higher education. Many of them came to us with certain needs to get their academic standards up. We're prohibited by the Board of Regents from spending a lot of money doing that. So one of the things that's really exciting about this program is that closer relationships with NWTC and the colleges, which we're developing now, will give us all a chance to create more of an access-friendly higher education environment in what is really an emerging urban setting, if you look at it. And so we have to be, on our end, really a lot more active and intentional in our interactions with NWTC and the high schools in doing what we can to give students who are not academically prepared or early in their high school career or transfer in with deficiencies, a chance to get started in college and to succeed. And that's, we can't do that alone. We have to do it in this partnership. So it's actually one of the biggest opportunities we have is addressing your concern.
Andrew?
Just a little more clarification. When you look at the, I'm referring to the current reality slide with the distributions between youth options and AP and so forth.
Is this one? Yes, it's the one, Andrew.
It was the one before that.
This one?
The numbers.
The numbers.
Yeah, that one.
Yes. So when you're, it's a preliminary review, so are you determining AP credits here by the typical cut scores that result in AP credit? Or are you actually, is this actually follow-up to see if the AP exams earned?
Okay. Where's Stephen Miller? Mr. Miller put this slide together for me. I'm going to guess what it is, so I don't want to guess for you.
Okay.
I'm going to invite Stephen to answer that question. I think one of the pieces, as we talk through it, I'm going to, I could make an assumption. I'm assuming that's a student who got a three or higher, but again, we know that some universities only take fours and fives, and some don't take them at all, so.
Make sure that I address your question. Andrew, can you repeat it, please?
Sure. So I guess I was thinking mostly of AP when I asked this, but this might apply in other areas as well. The 697 AP credits, is that based on what exam scores typically earn a certain amount of credits? Or is it actually, did we look at individual students and did it transfer? Or what, where did we come up with that?
Sure. So for the purposes of this exercise, we had to hypothesize, and we actually used UW-Green Bay's table for how credits would transfer. So for instance, a three on an AP Biology course would transfer to a certain number of credits.
Okay.
And so, you know, we had to make an assumption, again, because we're looking at a partnership with UW-Green Bay at this point in time, we use their table. If a student would go to a different school, AP and/or IB might transfer at a different credit rate.
Okay.
But it was based on students who had passed, received a passing score. In most cases for AP, that's a three or better, and in IB, it's a four or better.
Okay. And both, but if there were any differences, you went with UWGB's table?
We went with UW-Green Bay's table if there was any discrepancy.
Okay. And then, of course, there's other scenarios where we just know a credit was earned, obviously, because it was a dual.
Yeah, for instance, the college math course or the accounting course, where we have some sort of transcribed credit in place, then we could go off of that transcribed credit.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Well, yes, I guess maybe you're going to close by telling us, where are you with the process and how's this going to go out?
I think if we go back, we're in the process now of looking at this in terms of implementation and the strategic planning. Our goal will now be to develop and make sure there's a communication plan. We've not had this discussion in a broader table yet. It's been pretty much just in the visioning stage and strategic planning stage, but we'll communicate it now out and have conversations with our various groups. I know that we're going to be presenting, Dr. Raffin couldn't be here tonight, but I'm going to go and talk at their board next, and not sure where we are with your institution, but.
We'll present this idea to the Board of Regents when they meet on campus on April 7th and 8th. So we'll be talking to both the Education Committee and the Economic Development Group, and it'll be part of my presentation to the full board on Friday morning, so.
So we want to get our leadership team first on board and, you know, our different boards, and then go next steps in terms of communicating to the broader folks impacted, and then broader than that, and then start to look at project planning. I think one of the pieces that we have in mind is really to go slow to go fast. And so instead of, it isn't going to be this huge, huge piece for the first year, but are there places that we can tap into? For example, we've talked about looking at the students who are currently enrolled in City Stadium and in BayLink to see if these are students that we could provide some of the transition services and financial aid services to make sure that they're well-supported and moving forward post-secondary, just as a baby step. We're looking at what those academic career plans could be, because we know we're going to be in the implementation process, and what kinds of opportunities and to engage in various things for students, so that as they create an academic career plan, what that could be for them, and how do we, again, the same conversation around parent engagement and involvement. I think what the synergy around it, it's the perfect storm, but it's the perfect good storm, because many of these same conversations are being had at the Achieve Brown County table as well. And I know that Brenda, you're on Outcomes, too, and you know that similar conversations around post-secondary and how do we transition students. I know that there are folks sitting behind me that are engaged in just that whole cradle-to-career and beginning at the cradle, and how do we change that conversation so that folks can move forward? So what our plan is then, for our next step, is to keep the board apprised of where we're headed and make sure that as the governance questions come down, you know, what those impacts will be, and we'll bring those forward to you as a board as well, make sure that they're addressed. And as always, we are open for questions and comments and feedback. You know, I know there's a lot to noodle here, and we've been talking about it a long time, and I've shared some things along the way these last year, but not to this depth or breadth. So welcome further conversation, and obviously, there's a lot more to dig into and move us forward. But I have to share with you, and I echo the sentiments, that this, to me, is something that I'm not familiar with, where people are willing, who compete with one another, to come to the table because they recognize the importance of working collectively together forward for our community and our children. So I feel very fortunate to be in the middle and working collaboratively, and their teams have been awesome as well, and our team has been awesome. I feel really blessed to be a part of that as well. So I think it's an exciting time for us, and I'm looking forward to the next steps, too. Okay? Just concluding, just wanted to congratulate your athletes, the men and women.
Oh, yeah. We will be leaving Wednesday to go to two NCA tournaments. Georgia will be traveling with the men, and I'll be traveling with the women, and so we.
Do the women know who they're playing against?
They're going to, they should learn in the next 45 minutes.
Yes, as we speak. And congratulations to your residential facilities that are going.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much. It's exciting.
Appreciate that you're all thinking about.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you for coming.
All right. Next, we will go back to our agenda and move to the monitoring reports that will be facilitated by Celestine Jeffries.
Thank you, Brenda. So we are going to talk about achievement gap reduction, and we are going to have Andrea Landwerth come up and Ann Marsh and Nancy Short here. As they're coming to the table, I just want to thank Andrea Landwerth once again for having a lengthy conversation with me, I think it was close to Christmas time, actually, about AGR, just because I needed some, I needed to just get some more information about it. And so just to thank her once again for a very informative, lengthy conversation on my part. And so what, we're going to talk about AGR. Just for background for the public, AGR is the program that replaced Sage. AGR stands for Achievement Gap Reduction. Thank you. Take it away.
Thank you. Members of the Board of Education and Dr. Langenfeld, thank you for giving us the opportunity tonight to update you on AGR, or Achievement Gap Reduction. As Celestine said, it does replace the old Sage, which was a Grant Student Achievement Guarantee in Education. Our series is going to be, our presentation is going to be a two-part series. Tonight, we're going to be talking about and building some background knowledge on the transition from Sage to AGR. Later, next April, or this April, we are going to be bringing in the schools. So the principals will be coming in, and they'll be talking about what they're actually doing in their schools to operationalize AGR. Let's see if this, there we go. Before we get started, there are some live links in the presentation. If your PowerPoint does not, or slideshow does not have the live links, I will send it to you so that you have the live link, so that you can link on that afterwards. So Achievement Gap Reduction, or AGR, it replaces what was formerly known as the Student Achievement Guarantee in Education. In 2015, on July 1st, it was passed into state law, Act 53. And Act 53 outlines achievement gap reduction and the state laws that go along with it for implementation.
The Achievement Gap Reduction has a focus, as Sage did, on low socioeconomic status students. The data that is collected, the focus that is on the learning is on reading and math achievement. And the goal is to close the achievement gap between the identified low socioeconomic students and non-identified students. And that is done through the process. The success is considered that when the achievement gap is closed, is measured by evidence that's shown in academic performance of low-income students in a particular school in a grade and subject, and then the academic performance of all students enrolled in public schools statewide in that same grade level and subject area. So it's compared from local to state.
Could you put that in a little different?
Sure.
Language for public.
Sure. The compare, this is my night. So we measure achievement, and the achievement of our students that are in a formerly a Sage school, now an AGR school, an achievement gap school, is we look at their academic growth, and we compare it to the academic growth of students across the state in that same grade and in that same academic area. Is that better? Okay, thank you. Good. Come on, do the next slide. Next slide, please. We have nine schools that participate in AGR, and of these schools, the highest poverty level is 96.9 percent, and the lowest of the schools is 82 percent. So it's the range of poverty of those schools.
And Act 53 actually has provided school districts participating in AGR, the flexibility, as well as in the accountability. So in other words, Sage had one factor in which they base the eligibility, and that is a 1 to 18 ratio, teacher-to-student ratio, or two teachers to 30. Under AGR, they allow for an additional flexibility in how a district might meet those requirements. One-to-one tutoring by a licensed teacher, instructional coaching by a licensed teacher, the K, again, the K-three class ratio, 1 to 18, or 2 to 30, but, and also the professional development for teachers around small group instruction. So those strategies under Act 53 have widened, giving school districts much more flexibility. There's also a difference in the annual There's also a difference in the annual report to DPI, and this is where I believe the accountability piece comes in. In the past, the report to DPI under Sage was your class size reduction, the low student count, and your end-of-the-year fiscal report. The report now, under AGR, we have to report out on performance objectives, we also have to report out on formative and summative assessments, as well as the strategies that were selected in these small group instructions and coaching sessions, and which have been implemented, as well as the ratio of low-income students and the end-of-the-year fiscal report. The piece that we're excited about in the difference is that it does require a report to the Board of Education on the performance objectives, as well as, two times throughout the year, it requires, AGR requires a report to the Board of Education on the progress students are making towards closing their achievement gap.
I have a question.
Please.
The, the annual report for AGR looks very similar to what I recall for the reports for Title I, is that, so, really, really no difference, right? I mean, all, all the schools that are currently in Sage are Title I schools, and are reporting all that data currently anyway, correct?
The focus is on achievement gap reduction, so it's looking at low socioeconomic status and comparing it to non-identified, low SES or socioeconomic status, where in Title, if we think about Title I funds and our continuous school improvement plans for Title I schools, oftentimes, that was about achievement overall in different grade levels. This is really looking at that achievement gap reduction. Research tells us best practice is, if you want to look at what is the root cause, do a root cause analysis, you want to look at not just socioeconomic status as a low SES, but you want to look at English language learners, special education, you want to look at ethnicity, and you truly want to look at what are we doing to support those students?
The gap reduction was a metric that we had in place through the state when we had the report card anyway, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
So, there's really nothing new that's been asked for?
No, I think that, and I think your question is a good one, Ed, it's really about the why, and that's our next slide, why the change from Sage to AGR. And if we really firmly believe in research, we would know that reducing class size alone does not have a strong effect on continuous school improvement. So, we need to start looking at continuous school improvement as what are all those strategies that we are doing to influence higher achievement levels? And that's where teaching and learning comes in, around the multi-level systems of support that they're in the process of creating. When we look at interventions, so RTI, how are we responding to students who tell us that they are in need of additional interventions? How, what are we doing with our coaches to increase the universal? We have that flipped pyramid right now, where about seventy-eight percent of our children are not proficient in the area of reading. So, we know that that's an indicator of that our universal is not a strong universal. So, our coaches, that strategy is being used to support classroom teachers.
You touched on something that, it's on the next slide, and I would have asked it when we came up with that, but Nancy already did. The, the research that you show, effect size on learning and that class size has the lowest effect size, do we have our own data, anything locally that compares the smaller class to a regular-sized class, and, and effect size metric for that?
We, we do have some information or data that we would be able to collect very easily from each individual school. Most importantly, we're starting to look at Y's dash local, also some programming that Stephen has been working with the computer programmers on, so that we can actually bring that data with just a click, and be able to disaggregate it based on not just class size, so by classroom roster, but by all the different ethnicity groups, also language, socioeconomic status, and special education.
I think that would be helpful, because I, I think that there's still a lot of quote-unquote conventional wisdom out there, suggesting that class size really makes a huge difference when, I, I know that the national research, you know, lies at point, but.
Yeah, I just follow up with what Ed said, and I just want to agree with Ed's, I remember when Sage was implemented, and it's a very expensive program, and initially, it was fifteen to one, or thirty to two, and then a little bit more flexibility built in. But I think at the time, people were sort of, good, we have fifteen kids in a classroom with the low socioeconomic kids, good, we've succeeded, we're done. And that was kind of the, and there was never any report back to boards on whether this is succeeding, but we only have fifteen kids in a classroom, so it must be succeeding. And there was never really any accountability built into the program, and beyond the cost of having smaller class size, it's been a very expensive program as far as facility usage.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, I think this accountability is critical to whether we're doing right by our kids.
Chris?
Thank, thank you. Yeah, you two gentlemen just sort of summed up what I was thinking about here. I never caught it before, we really don't have a good evaluation of Sage in terms of is it being effective, other, other than doing it, though. It sounds like some of the data might be in Title I, which I wasn't aware of. I, I didn't have to respond to this, but, you know, point two-one is, isn't an insignificant number when it comes to class size, and one might wonder, is that part of the driving force that allows more time for teachers to have relationships with their students, fewer students to develop relationships with? And, and I don't know whether there's an answer to that out there somewhere, but just something that jumps out at me.
Hattie's work, John Hattie's work is really about different influences on achievement. So, he's really trying to answer that question, what works best in, for academic achievement? And when you look at class size, it's a point two-one. His work, he looked at most effective to least effective, his average was a point four effect size, so he used that as kind of that turning point, excuse me. So, class size alone is only a point two-one, but as you can see, the other influences are much higher. So, we looked at answering some questions that board members had brought to Mark Smith, and one of them was around what is the district financial implications? So, we pulled together some information. Currently, right now, the allocation per student is approximately $2,200 that we received through the grant. So, we currently have 2,089 students qualified, so our grant this year is approximately 4.5 million. We also talked with, looked at a project that Terry Williams had worked on about a year and a half ago, and she looked at in a current year, which was, I believe, the thirteen, fourteen school year, what was the cost savings to the district? And it was approximately $1.5 million that we had saved that year, just when we look at staffing. So, she used about $75,000 as the staffing, a cost per, thank you, the cost per staff member. With Sage, we would have had to hire, due to the lower class sizes, approximately forty-three or forty-four teachers. The Sage grant that year covered sixty-five teachers, so it was a cost savings of approximately 1.5 million. When we look at overall, our average for the last seventeen years was almost $4 million per year. So, overall, in the last seventeen years, we have had approximately $65 million that we have received through sixteen years of Sage, and now the fifteen, sixteen school year with AGR. Dr. Langenfeld?
Good. Hi, I just wanted to add that when the state was really looking at this seriously in terms of moving to the AGR model, Terry Williams took that data that we talked about and took it to the state, and spent a fair amount of time engaged with the Education Committee chaired by Senator Olson, and a team really looking at that in terms of, you know, knowing that, that you look at Hattie's work, but others as well, the tipping point of class size was not all the answer. And I think that that was a, it was, I felt really good about the fact that they hadn't been invited to the table to talk about our experience, and I know that we had a strong voice because of Terry at the table, too, to provide our insights as well. So, I just wanted to put that out there as well, as long as talking about her work, too.
Absolutely. Thank you. I'm not doing good at being Vanna today, licking here.
Our, in our, in our, in our April board meeting, we are going to have, as Andrea had mentioned, the principals and staff from the different AGR schools, and they're going to be coming to present about the strategies that they've implemented, and Nancy had, had mentioned those strategies, the one-on-one tutoring, the coaching, and then also, you know, the, the smaller class sizes are certainly a part of that. They will, we will be doing also presenting disaggregated data that we have. Another thing that Andrea had mentioned is we are working with Stephen, and Stephen Miller and the technology programmers, so that we do have access to disaggregated data. Right now, we have probably mostly class data, but that is in the, that's, that we're working on, it'll be able to be entered into Infinite Campus, we'll be able to pull that information up. So, that's in process. So, the mid-year won't have quite as much information in terms of data as we will at the end of the year, and certainly for next year. And then, just for your, for your own purpose, we, Andrea included this, the class size strategies, more information about that, because there is a lot of information out there, and it's very interesting to read. John Hattie's work is what we've been really reading recently, but there's also additional to consider.
Thank you. Other questions? Brenda?
So, is, is there still a requirement for the one to eighteen, or is that if you have one-to-one tutoring and instructional coaching, your class sizes can get a little bigger, or what's the rule around that? Because I know it was strict with Sage.
It was very strict within a, approximately, when I was working with Terry last year, within approximately a two-week period of time, if we went over eighteen, we needed to hire. And usually, what ended happening, because they're high-mobility schools, we would hire a teacher, so now we put two teachers in that classroom, and within a month, they'd be down to seventeen. The other thing is that it was, in my mind, the wrong message to our teachers. The message really was, as soon as you had, turned that eighteenth child, so it's nineteen, that you have to hire, because you're not capable of teaching more than the eighteenth that is in your class. So, it became about compliance for a lot of teachers. What we do now is, Ann and I, when there is a class that goes over twenty in kindergarten and first grade, and then twenty-one for second and third grade, Ann and I go into the school, and we hold a problem-solving meeting, the principal leads that meeting, teachers come to the table with data, so that we're making informed decisions and changing it from compliance to really looking at continuous school improvement. What is happening in that classroom? Is there another teacher that could push in during literacy or math? What other supports are there? So far, we have had a very positive response to that. We have not had teachers who have felt like their class size of twenty or twenty-one is too many to manage, so we've received positive response from that.
So, does the, the law, the bill that was passed through AGR, did they specify class size requirements at all, or?
Class size is one strategy that you could implement, so you can implement all three, or you can choose one strategy or two strategies to implement. For those classrooms that are using class.
Andrea, just reiterate those strategies.
The strategies are one-to-one or small group. We got clarification that it could be small group, because we want that social learning in our interventions. So, it can be the one-to-one or small group intervention, it can be universal coaching, so the coach is working on universal instruction, or it can be the class size, one to eighteen, two to thirty. But in addition to the class size, you can't just do class size, you have to demonstrate that you have provided professional learning about small group differentiation when you use class size.
Good. Any other questions?
Yeah, go back to the, the one-to-one. Just talk a little bit more about that, please, just what's being, what the, what the Act says you have to provide, how much, when, you know, that, that sort of.
They don't, they don't call that out at, at all, and the reason why is they want districts to be able to be flexible in supporting schools with the multi-level systems of support. So, it, it may look different in every district. What you're looking at, though, what you're reporting out is the achievement gap, the closing of the achievement gap, so you're reporting out on the results. So, your strategy may be one-to-one or small group differentiation, but what you're reporting out is the results of that strategy.
So, that one-to-one or small group could be provided by the, the single teacher in the classroom, if you structure your classroom that way, and it would satisfy that requirement?
We asked that question because it was so vague in the beginning, Ann Barsh, myself, Terry, a couple, Nancy, we had a conference call with DPI, and after our conference call, they came out with information that the state certification guidelines would supersede whatever the law right now is states. So, for example, in the state of Wisconsin, to do a tier-two intervention outside of the classroom for literacy, you have to hold a 316 or a 317 license. 316 is a reading teacher, 317 is a reading specialist. However, for math intervention, there is not a specific certification. In our district, we have math-trained interventionists with AVMR, so that our district process would supersede that at this point.
The only piece in math is that the interventionist must be certified in the range, the student range in which they're providing services to. So, if your licensure is K-8, you could provide intervention to students in grades K through eight, but not high school. I think that one way to look at it is that our district really follows, again, we're very learning-driven, and we use our data to inform who would need a one-on-one intervention or a small group intervention, and our classroom data, the data that the classroom teachers collect, the formative and summative data that they collect on a, on an ongoing basis is used then to determine which children are next up for intervention. You make a great point that, you know, no district has enough interventionists for the interventions that most children need, and so to have a very flexible, universal, in a workshop model allows for those multi-level systems of support to be happening right in the universal classroom on a daily basis.
But the tier-two, if we're talking about literacy, has to be by a 316 or 317?
Outside of the classroom. The classroom teacher can provide it, but outside of the classroom tier-two, you only can provide two groups under the law. So, anything beyond that, you have to have a 316. So, in other words, if you're the classroom teacher, you could teach to small groups and not have a 316, but you couldn't, you couldn't provide intervention beyond that.
And you could only provide it to your students?
Outside of your universal, like your small group instruction, that's built into your universal.
Yes. Andrea, you had mentioned you anticipate the approach, the implementation of the strategies to vary from district to district. Are they going to vary between our district and school to school?
From school to school, and actually, grade level to grade level, they can vary, depending upon right now what your level of support is. So, and that's all based on your data. So, for example, it may be at Dan School that they see that they have more children who need math intervention, so they may be using their math interventionist as one of their strategies. We know that all of our Title I schools or in our AGR schools have needs in the area of literacy, but they all have different amounts of FTE for interventionist. So, what is, what is common amongst all of the nine schools are that they all have literacy coaches that have been trained under one framework, and that they're really working at the universal level.
And we're also working on a tier-two and tier-three system that are known as value-added, so that we're actually working around the s- so that we're actually working around the skills that children need additional support in, so that they can be successful in the universal. It's very strategic and it's very, I'd like, like to say it's very dynamic, that we know exactly prescribe what a student would be missing. That's the intervention we'd be providing. And then to make sure that in our universal, that it's supporting the child going back in. There's no one intervention that's going to be successful unless the child goes back to the classroom and that skill development is being supported at the universal. That's where they spend the other seven hours of their day, but they're not in the thirty-minute intervention. And so we're working diligently to develop selected interventions and targeted interventions so there'd be a menu. And our interventionists would be trained and teachers trained on those interventions and specifically call out what those interventions actually would be addressing. So we can be more succinct and diagnostic in meeting our children's needs, as well as an assessment system that aligns with those interventions.
I have a question. And it's about the socioeconomic status. So, and Andy, you know, I know that you know about this too, Nancy, but this really has to do with CEP, community eligibility. And so as we look at CEP, we're looking at direct certification and the table that you had provided, you know, use direct certification as well as a free reduced lunch rate. But I, to my recollection, I know the numbers have changed a bit, Sullivan's direct cert is fifty percent, sixty percent. So how, my first question is, how does CEP intersect with this sort of count of low SES? And do, if we have a school that ends up with CEP and it's sixty percent, do we provide these supports for all of the K-three students regardless of the-
There's an alternative application. So there's, there will be a form. It's one of the questions that we asked DPI when Nancy and Andy and Kathy Walker were looking at a community eligibility program. We wanted to know, how is it going to impact not only AGR, but also our Title I funding? Because we use free-reduced. So there is an alternate app that we will be using every year where families will be filling it out. It doesn't, I don't think it gets fed up to the state like the CEP information does.
But we will get both a CEP and a free-reduced lunch count with that alternative app. It's my understanding, under AGR, that it, that has to be taken.
So, so AGR cannot rely on the direct certification, it has to be the free-reduced lunch numbers?
Correct. And, and it, it actually is to our benefit because fewer children would qualify-
Under direct-
Under direct cert. And they're paid per, per pupil that I'm going to call like a membership fee or a grant fee, the $2,200. It's per student who is identified free and reduced.
Okay.
So we would have fewer.
That does actually bring up what I thought was really kind of a dumb question in my head, but maybe not. So if you've got a school that has eighty-six percent free-reduced lunch rate, and so let's just say that's eighty-six percent each grade for the sake of argument-
Sure.
That means fourteen percent of the kids in second grade are not receiving free-reduced price lunch. They could still be low-income, but they're not receiving free-reduced price lunch. So does that mean that those fourteen students, fourteen percent of the students are not included in these supports? Or it doesn't matter? We're just not going to get reimbursed for the fourteen percent?
Correct. You're only going to be reimbursed for, right, the eighty-six percent and the fourteen percent receiving that. Teri and her study that she did, when she really looked at crunching those numbers, free and reduced at about eighty-five percent in grades kindergarten through third grade pays for the additional teachers.
Okay.
So there were other schools throughout the years, starting this year with AGR. No new schools are able to be identified, but previously, there were other schools that could have been identified because they were at fifty percent or higher free and reduced hot lunch. However, you, it, it's not cost-effective at that point.
Okay. And then as you're, as you're contemplating how this data is going to look, I'm assuming that you're going to show us the same data that you have to show the state? Yes?
We, the, the law states that we show you the progress monitoring data and then the end of year. We don't have, we don't feed that up to the state.
Oh, okay, okay.
The state wants the school boards to be more engaged. You have been a very engaged school board with our school monitoring reports.
Wait, wait. So you're actually saying something right?
One of the things that we will not struggle with, and we, because we talked to DPI ahead of time about this, our interventions are not state interventions.
Oh, sure, sure.
The state doesn't, except for pales and for badger. We don't get a state low SES or a comparison. So they said that we could compare all of our schools to each individual school that is involved in AGR. They will compare it to the district average, which actually for us, I think is also a really good idea. The message is, we're looking at, what are we doing right here in Green Bay? Steve's program, Steve working, Miller working with the technology programmers have already been able to write that for all of our formative and summative assessments that are district assessments, except for AVMR. They're working on that right now.
And so do you envision, so, you know, as we talk about the data warehouse and the kind of data that comes to the board, I'm just going to give my own two cents here. Do you, but ask a question, really. Do you envision, so kind of a two cents, kind of a question. Okay. Do you envision providing longitudinal data for us?
Yes, absolutely.
And we are in the process of developing that right now. We have to begin collecting that. The comparison that Andrea was alluding to is often called peer-like comparison data. And so that's exactly what we'll be doing. We'll also be doing that with our Advantage Math Recovery data.
Okay.
So we'll be like peers comparing.
And I think, you know, just regarding the licensure for someone who's going to provide a support outside the classroom, there's one licensure for reading. And, you know, I heard what you said, that we, we will have some, we are having and will have some internal supports and standards for math.
Yes.
But, you know, to whatever extent we can make those on par, I think behooves us because our math instruction needs some work. So-
And I can guarantee you that they are.
Okay.
And the professional learning that is going into our math interventions is equal to or exceeding the literacy professional learning.
Okay. Great. Any other questions? Yes, Brenda? I didn't mean to cut you off.
So I'm confused by your statement that you don't have to report to DPI, only to the board. When I look at annually report to DPI, so there still are things, you clarify that for me, because it's confusing.
So currently, what you have to report to the state, in the beginning of the school year, the schools enter into a contract. That contract outlines their objectives, so their learning objectives or goals for each grade level in the area of math and the area of reading. In addition to that, they have to report out how they're going to measure those goals.
Okay, so the assessment is what you're using-
Formative and summative.
Not results of what you're using. That was my confusion.
And then you have to put in your strategies that you used. So strategies you're going to use, and then at the end of the year, strategies you actually used.
Okay.
Right. So there, there's flexibility there that depending upon your data, you might want to change your strategies throughout the year. Where it used to be, you were locked into that class size and that's, there were other things within Sage, like community involvement and those kinds of things. But as far as at the school level, it really was class size.
Okay. All right, thanks.
It, AGR aligns beautifully with continuous school improvement, and it's moving us out of compliance and really looking at comprehensively with the multi-level systems of support, how do we ensure that we're meeting the needs of all kids?
Okay. Other questions?
All right, welcome.
Thank you very much.
For the next month.
Yep, indeed.
Thank you.
That concludes my report.
All right. Thank you, Celestine. We'll move next to superintendent's update.
All right, I want to begin by the, taking a look at the March calendar, which is now April. Spring break is, is right around the corner, and I'm feeling, seeing some big smiles. And I would expect that folks are smiling in a lot of places. Let's see where next week goes. But then we turn the corner into April, and we begin with the teaching and learning session on April fourth, right here at 5:30, immediately followed by the organizational support work session in the district office building in room 331. And then we have a retreat coming up on April 11th, right here at the district office building, and that's at 4:30. And again, same room, 331. We have a regular board meeting on April 18th at 5:30, and again, 331 at the district office building. And then on April 20th, we have the Golden Apple Awards banquet. And if folks, I'm sure at the table are well aware, but Southwest High School music teacher, Brendan Rockstroll, will be receiving a Golden Apple this year, and we're very excited for him. And, and we have many teachers of distinction who will also be honored that evening. So it's always a wonderful night, and I, and I hope board members can join us. And then that's the calendar. I have a couple of success stories to share. And I, recently, I don't know how long ago it was, it wasn't very long ago, I had an opportunity to visit East High School and see their performance of our town. And two of the actors in the performance are sitting at the table with us tonight. And they did an outstanding job. And I don't know if Ms. Martinez recognized that when she sat down, because she, she was part of a shout-out from the audience as part of her character. And I looked over and there she is, sitting in the row, but she doesn't quite look like she does now. She had a little different costume on. And so McKenna and Luli, you did an extraordinary job. I thought the whole show was wonderful. A little distressing is that, it was Arthur Miller, right? Yeah. Some of his work is a little deep, but they did a wonderful, wonderful job. So kudos to you. I wanted to give you that shout-out while I'm here at the table. Another, another exciting thing that's been going on is today is an important day for two of our principals who took their teams. Dan Maulberg from Keller and Principal Marshall Moten went to, from Jefferson, went to Madison to receive their award from Dr. Tony Evers as Wisconsin Title I School of Recognition for Feeding the Odd Schools. And they'll be joining us next month. But these are schools who are identified as the top twenty-five percent of schools considered to be high-poverty in the state and have above-average student achievement in reading and math when compared to other similar-sized schools and grade configurations and poverty levels. So we congratulate them and look forward to their visit next month. And I also learned some very exciting news in the last couple of days from principals. Principal from West shared that Lisa Merkel, one of her teachers, one of his teachers, Mark Flaton shared, and Diane Stelmark shared, that Michelle Flechek, both are Cole Teacher Fellowship winners this year. So we have to help them. And that's a very big deal, because we, we typically don't always have one, much less two. So I think we have outstanding teachers in our district, and I want to congratulate them as well. And I, I would like them to come to the board and, and be introduced in the future. And then finally, on Saturday, once again, the Leonardo da Vinci School had the pie run. I learned talking with Marie Kubachek, who is a math teacher in our district, that actually there was some significance of the day anyway, even though it wasn't the exact day like last year with the, because of something else. But if there are math folks out there, you probably know what I'm trying to talk about. But Marie is such a bright math teacher at Edison High School, or Edison Middle School, but she shared that with. It was a highly successful day. I think that the parents and community and students and staff, there were approximately, I think Tammy said, about five hundred people participating. And as you well know, the proceeds go to Habitat for Humanity. And I know that we have a host, a host dedication coming up where our students have been part of that. But it's really, I talked about how the board's vision is to ensure that every child be college, career, and community-ready. And this is a way to give back to the community. And the students take it very seriously. They have great leadership. And it was a highly successful day, and the sun was out. It was extraordinary. So anyway. So there's lots of good things. These are just some highlights. So thank you for that. And that, I think that concludes mine. I have no action items. So thank you.
All right. Next, we have a legal update. I'll call Melissa to the table to do that.
Good evening. This month's report is an update to the board on task force work from a committee that looked at revising our affidavit of residency form, a form I'll probably refer to as an AOR, and our M14. And Katie, for your information, M14 is not an acronym. It's the actual name of a form. It came out of, that's the page number in the special education handbook. That was the page number, and that's how the form was named. The purpose of the form is for an authorization to exchange pupil record information. So that's really the purpose of the form, but the form goes by the name in M14. The forms are really intertwined. I think the purpose of the forms is to enable parents and legal guardians to be able to facilitate the sharing of pupil information, as well as to accommodate our students who live in alternative settings, to afford those individuals they live with the opportunity to participate in the student's education, both by communicating with teachers, but also to establish where the student would go to school. There really is minimal guidance on what establishes residency for students. I pointed out to a very old Wisconsin Supreme Court case in my memo to you, which has been, become to be known as the Thayer decision and the Thayer Rule, which says a student establishes residency if they don't live with his or her parent with any other individual, so long as they're not living with that individual for the sole purpose of attending school in that school district. And that's pretty much it. And school districts are left with trying to figure out whether a student is in fact living in a school district for the sole reason of attending school in that district. And this only applies to students whose parents live in another district. This rule doesn't set the rules for us when we're looking at, how do we set attendance areas of schools for students who live in our district, whose parents live in our district, and the students may want to attend another school in our district and live with somebody else already in the district. So the, the law is really, provides some guidance, minimal guidance to us when students want to come and live with somebody in our district and their parents live somewhere else. But with respect to our own students, we are, so long as we're constitutional and not arbitrary and capricious and violating any other law, we can set those rules ourself. So as the task force sat down, we looked at some of the concerns that have evolved with the use of the AOR form. As my memo indicates to you, I wasn't here at the time the AOR form came into being, but legend has it that the AOR form was developed to accommodate our students who were children of Packer players who were in the care of nannies. And how would those individuals, they were left in, in their care, make educational decisions or be able to have student information? And over time, that form really didn't change, but the purpose of the form did. And many of our students live in alternative educational or alternative home settings. And how would we facilitate allowing those individual students who are living with to be able to establish their residency as well as have access to information? So the, the form didn't change, and that created some ambiguities with what roles the individual, the student was living with, what responsibility they had, what responsibility the parents still kept, and then what decisions could be made for that student when they were living with somebody other than the parent and the guardian. And so that created very inconsistent practices in the district, as well as it left open room for interpretation among our families as far as when would that AOR form be, be appropriate. And unfortunately, we've had the, the form be used inappropriately. We've had students who couldn't get into the school of choice through inter-district transfer, and then use the AOR form to say that they were living with their daycare provider, or they were living with a family friend on the other side of town so that they could then attend the school that they wished to attend. If you speak with the registrar's at the high schools or with many of our building principals, there is developing an increased pattern of students switching schools frequently during the course of the year. So for example, home life may not be the best for a student, and they decide to go live with a family friend. and they decide to go live with a family friend. They then switch high schools. That relationship may not stay intact, and they go live with another friend. And so this creates a revolving door of some of our students throughout the course of the school year, when we know in fact that if you stay in a school, it develops consistency, and that's really the best for student achievement. So when the Task Force looked at this, we came forward with some recommendations. Because the Thayer Rule allows a student to establish residency for purposes of not just attending school in the school district, we're a little limited as to what rules we can apply. What we wanted to establish was transparency for those who are allowing their student to live with somebody else here in the district, as well as for the individual who is assuming responsibility. So we've created a system whereby the individual who is accepting responsibility knows clearly what role they're taking over, as well as what their responsibility is going to be, as well as what the parent is delegating, and also what the parent is retaining and what the lines of communication will be. With respect to our students who live here in the district and who want to go live with somebody else in the district, so long as their parent is able to continue to care for them, their parent's address will remain their attendance area school. So if a student wants to live with somebody on the west side of town and lives on the east side of town, that's fine, they can do that. But the student's attendance area school will remain the east-side school. If the parent is unable to care for the student for the four limited reasons that I noted in the memo to you, then the educational guardianship will apply. In looking at different systems, we did a lot of research across the state as to how other large school districts are tackling this issue. Madison School District instituted a somewhat similar program. They saw that their AOR requests were reduced by 90% over the course of one school year. Because in their opinion, they had the AORs being used for inappropriate purposes. Any questions on this system before we move on to the revisions to the authorizations for pupil information? We have a pretty robust rollout plan. We will be introducing this to the principals tomorrow. I'll be introducing this to the social workers in April. We're going to do a soft rollout with central registration for the rest of the school year after spring break, so that we can work out any discrepancies in the system or any ambiguities. And then in August, we'll be doing a two-hour training with our clericals so that they are fully up to speed with the new system. And then as you can see, we provided a few of the forms that would be put online so that our families would also have this information and would know how to be directed to various resources as well as the forms. Okay, so then moving on to the revisions to our authorizations to share information. We have been working very hard in the district to make sure that we have the right consents in place so that we can share information with non-family members, but people who function very much like family members. Unfortunately, as I've talked to you about this before, FERPA, the federal law, as well as the Wisconsin law, are not similar. And while FERPA allows for stepparents to be considered parents, under the Wisconsin law, stepparents are not considered parents, and therefore we must have authorizations in place in order to share student information. Student, go ahead, Celsi.
So you'd have to have authorization, so I'm imagining a situation where the parents, the biological parents are divorced. They're each remarried. So then those biological parents would have to give permission for those stepparents to get?
Only one parent needs to provide permission.
Only one parent?
So the, they could each provide permission to their respective spouses to receive, their new spouses, to receive the pupil information.
And what if, what if the biological mother did not want the stepmother to receive information?
We would need a court order in order to prohibit the father's rights from delegating the ability for a stepmother to receive the pupil record information.
Okay.
So under that scenario, we've used the M-14 form, because that was the form, the only form we've had. And that form is valid for one year. It's very cumbersome for parents to fill out. It includes a lot of information, because the purpose of the form was really for an IEP process, for the facilitation of an IEP process. It's most, the form was developed to really share information between the school district and agencies. And it's, we would get the forms back incomplete, not have the information that we have to have in order to have a valid disclosure. So the committee is proposing that a simplified form be used for sharing of information to those family members, to those stepparents, grandparents, and that we would use a revised M-14 form, what we're calling Permission Authorization to Share Information with Agencies, that would be, will be much easier for families to fill out and much more transparent for our families. And those forms that we would use for parents, stepparents, grandparents, will be valid until they're revoked. So we no longer have to have those forms executed annually, which we hope will facilitate our family's ability to receive information. Any questions?
Are you going to ask a question? So Steve, you look like you're coming up. Kristy, have something?
No, go ahead, yeah, Chris, go ahead.
Well, thank you for helping, trying to clear it up. It's still problematic when you start getting into somebody's situation. I just want to make sure that our folks know that whatever the complications are in trying to get signatures, the kid doesn't get lost in that shuffle, and we do provide an education for them. I know previous experience, it's hard to chase people down sometimes and get what you need. I mean, you know, you have situations, quite frankly, if somebody says, "I'm the uncle," you just take their word for it, you don't really know. And you hope they have the best interest of the child at heart, and of course, you work with it.
Thank you.
Now I have a question. So, community partners, so the type of authorization that the parent or guardian would give, authorizing release of pupil records to agencies, community partners, and non-family individuals? So is that, walk me through that. So let's say the community partner is the YW, the YMCA.
Correct.
So walk me through what that would look like.
The YMCA is a very good example. The YMCA is one of our community partners for our 21C CLC program, 21st Century Community Learning Center. I hope I got that correct. And we, in order to facilitate, because they are a community partner, in order to facilitate those individuals working with our students after school, we like to share pupil record information so that the community partner can work on the things that the student needs assistance with in the classroom. And as enrollment in those programs occurs, the parents sign an authorization to disclose pupil record information so we can disclose that information.
And that's an annual?
That is annual, correct.
And how does a parent revoke that? So let's say that the child is no longer going to the YMCA program.
Right now, there is no form to revoke, and the authorization form itself indicates that it needs to be revoked in writing. As part of this process, we've developed a very nice form where parents just need to check boxes and provide a few pieces of information so that we can revoke that, those permissions.
Okay, thank you.
Andrew?
So what I'm left concerned about, and I appreciate our, we had a conversation earlier today about some points that were so hyper-technical, I thought I would get them all the way without boring the rest of you with them. They were really hyper-technical. But here's what I'm still struggling with, is you have, we're trying to prevent abuses of having people just do an affidavit of residency and changing willy-nilly, so I get that. But what about the situation where there is a perfectly legitimate reason that's greatly beneficial to the student? Nothing's being abused, all adults are in agreement that this is better for the kid.
Can I just ask clarifying question? Are you talking intra-district, so a parent lives in the district?
Parent lives in the district, right.
Okay, thank you.
So, yep. Everyone's in agreement that the kid living in the east, for whatever reason, living on the east side is better than living where either the parents live. And according to this policy, we would be taking that away, except if it was one of the four reasons, unless just say the attendance area was closed. I don't know how I feel about us being the ones to, I guess, make that judgment call over something that's, that all the adults in the kid's life have agreed was better, safer, whatever. And the bottom line is, taking the school attendance away may topple a carefully-done arrangement there. So how would we proceed there in that situation?
That's a great question, and I do believe we have an alternative to that. You indicated that, and under your scenario, the school is closed for intra-district transfer. But there is, in the revised rule that you've already adopted, there is a provision in the revised rule for a district placement. And that district placement considers a number of factors. And under your scenario, I think this would probably be a candidate for a district placement under that scenario.
Okay, and what's a district placement?
In the intra-district transfer policy, when intra-district transfers are closed and when that window is no longer open, or if the school has a waitlist, there is an opportunity for an appeal to go to the executive director, and the executive director can consider various factors in making a placement of a student in a school other than the student's attendance area school.
Okay, is that new?
Yes, that came to the board.
Couple months ago. So it would be, so we would, it would first have the opportunity to be tested after the intra-district transfer period?
Yes, yep, so we'll go hand-in-hand with the revisions. The full rollout of this will be for 1617, so that will go hand-in-hand with these revisions. We want to make sure we're meeting the needs of our students, and I think this provides flexibility with those changes as well as with the changes here in this procedure.
As long as, as long as people are aware of their rights and the procedures, you know, and I feel certainly better with that explanation, but the idea that, you know, almost, right, almost every school form has, or school decision that has, you know, consequences, has some kind of right to appeal to DPI, Circuit Court, whatever, you know, deep within the fine print. And my concern is that I don't want to see someone in a special situation look at the new four categories and just vacate their carefully-worked-out arrangement for that reason, even though the executive director would have sided with them, right? Because I think in, I think you have, you can have perfectly capable adults when a lot of things are going on in life and family situations, there's only so much time you have to investigate every angle and every appeal process. So I'm not, my concerns aren't alleviated yet, but I feel better about it.
If I could, Andrew, a situation like that, I can't imagine the family not sharing those, or the student and the family not sharing what those conditions might be with teachers, social worker, counselor, or administration. And the pupil services staff are phenomenal about getting into that and advocating for the kids. And it's a good question, those things do occur. I know they occur, I've had experience with that. And my experience has been that usually it's one of those folks I mentioned before, pupil service or the teacher themselves, who will advocate and bring that information forward.
So it's very likely that if, if someone heard, "Oh, I have to go back to wherever next year," there'd be some kind of conversation, "Oh, how come?" Well, you know, this new form came out, and that would raise a flag, and there'd be some conversations?
Just to be clear, we're not, anyone who is currently attending a school under an AOR, we are not going back and revoking this, this is only going forward. So kids who are sitting in a, not their school that is not their parent's attendance area school, they're going to stay, we're not making any changes, this is only perspective.
Okay, so their grandfather?
Yes.
All the way through with that address?
So long as they stay at that address. If they break their attendance at that address, they wouldn't.
Sure.
Yep, but their track, so if they're in an elementary, their track is, so long as they stay at that school. Or, I'm sorry, at that address.
However, the flipside of this is the conversation about, "Hey, I'm going to blank next year," might never occur if, right, if someone's reading these new rules, and it just never even becomes a point of discussion. We've looked at the rules, okay, we can't send them to grandma's house because they wouldn't be able to qualify, and that's it, so.
I agree with Ed. We've had many, many cases like this where pupil services staff is intimately involved, the principal's involved, teachers are involved. And we've been able to work through those, and I don't see this new process preventing that.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have our Interstudent Student Council report, and I will turn that over to Louie from East High School.
Good evening. McKenna and I will be sharing good news that we've been talking about. We just had our meeting last Sunday, April 6th, or March 6th, and it went well. So overall, sports are starting at the different schools for spring, so spring break is next week, and we are excited, as you mentioned. The CP telethon, we attended that as well, when McKenna were there, and it went well. It was something that ICSC always looks forward to every year. So upsetting that I won't be next year, but hopefully I can volunteer. For good news at Preble, they, well, throughout the high schools, DECA, they went to DECA State. And for West, the musical Little Woman is starting in a few weeks, so that's exciting. And the band trip to New York City is soon as well. We have a tennis player on ICSC from West who's excited about boys tennis starting. For Southwest, Mr. Title Town happened earlier this month, and one of our ICSC members, Zach, took third place. And a lot of people qualified for state for solo ensemble. And for East, we had a East representative at Title Town as well, he took fourth place. The play happened, Our Town, so me and McKenna were in it, and it was a lot of fun. Soccer is starting as well, which is exciting, as I said, spring sports are starting. And for John Dewey Academy of Learning, McKenna will elaborate on that.
Yep, we had groups that presented for the Village of Delphi, and proposed projects for their city center, and those went very well. We had a school-wide class field trip to see the movie Race, and we learned kind of background information into that time period and the struggles that desiccals went through. We are currently working with the Wildlife Sanctuary and the Home Shelter to put together the garlic mustard pull-up we've been doing every year. We really look forward to that. I'm not exactly sure when that'll be, but I will get a full count of that. And on Friday, we had a sort of Easter potluck lunch with the students and their families to get ready for Easter.
So if that's what's going on at schools, so spring is happening, a lot of things are happening. We're kind of trying to figure out what's been going on at schools, but since winter is over, there's kind of that gap where it's like, we're starting fresh again. So we're excited, we're excited to meet with the board soon. Everything's going good for ICSC, thank you. Any questions?
When is that next meeting?
It is. It's in May.
Oh, it's in May?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, the end, or close to graduation.
Wow, that's late.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Oh, our next event night at John Dewey is April 7th, I believe.
Oh, it is?
Yes.
April 7th?
Yeah, we're doing them a little different this year. It used to be first semester and the second semester. And now we had one, like the first part of the school year, and then we're having one now April, and then the seniors have their own event night.
Twenty-fifth of May.
That concludes our talk.
Yeah, we have, it's later, so we don't bump up against all the AP tests.
Oh.
Yeah, because we had a change in last year at the last.
Yeah, last year we decided to move away.
Yeah, last year, we decided to move away from AP so that everybody could come, because there's.
Somebody said April seventh, that's superintendent's.
So that will be with the current?
Current.
Current board and the new board.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's May twenty-fifth of the ICSC.
That's John Dewey's event night.
John Dewey event night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Louie.
All right, thank you, Louie, and McKenna.
So, but we still, we still get all four?
Yeah.
Meetings?
Yeah, yeah, it'll just be later.
We just moved May two weeks.
Move to later.
Yeah, so we don't conflict with AP tests.
Okey dokey.
All right, then, next we have our legislative liaison report, I'll turn that over to Mike.
Thanks, Brenda. The first item is update on state education legislation. Had a conversation just a couple hours ago with Dan Rossmiller for the public's enlightenment, he is the chief lobbyist for the Wisconsin Association of School Boards. The, the assembly is done for the year, they've adjourned for the rest of the year. The Senate has their final session tomorrow, and as, as of now, that is the only day that they're scheduled, they conceivably could come up with another day, but Dan doesn't think so. And actually, there is, there's a mix of good news and bad news on what happened with legislation. The Assembly failed to act on, on three bills that we were very concerned about, and thus the Senate won't even take them up, so they're dead for the years, and that is the guns-on-school grounds, that's dead, the bill on referendum restrictions, which is dead, and the transgender bathroom bill, which is dead. So that, three very positive things. And also, and it looks like.
Positive that they were, that they're dead.
That they're dead.
No, no, it's positive that they're dead.
Right, yes.
The Assembly did not pass them, and because the Assembly is done for the year, the Senate won't bother to take them up because both houses would have to concur, and the Assembly is not coming back.
Did they vote on all those, or did some of them die before they took?
They, they died, no, I don't know, any of them came up for a vote, they all died.
Oh, really?
Before they got to the Assembly?
And, and I do give, WASP and the School Administrators Alliance lobbied very heavily on those bills, and I think a lot of legislators were concerned, and actually, on the referendum bill, there were a couple of Republicans who signed on as co-authors, and after hearing concerns, they took their names off the bill, so.
Right, what about, what about the crime reports?
I'm getting there.
He said good news, bad news.
No, actually, actually, it appears, appears that the crime reporting bill is also dead. It passed the Assembly, but Luther Olson, who is Chair of the Senate Education Committee, refused to hold a hearing on the bill. So unless something happens on the floor of the Senate, usually, one of the houses will not take up a bill that has not gone through committee. So that is not, so, it looks like the crime reporting bill is dead also. There, the Senate will, has, and Dan ran through the calendar for me on the Senate, we picked out the ones that affect K-12 education, because I looked at their calendar, and it's like fifteen pages long. Some of them are resolutions honoring Justice Scalia and other resolutions, like, there's typical resolutions. The Senate will probably take up, because the Assembly passed it, testing opt-out bill, which has some very extensive parental notifications on it, and I think we've talked about that in the past, so that is one thing to keep on it. They will also be taking up, and this is kind of where we get into the bad news, they will be taking up the, the special needs bill that was, an amendment was added by Speaker Voss, which would restrict the, the revenue controls, reduce the revenue controls that school districts have for students that take vouchers. That would take revenue cap authority away from public school districts. And I think we've talked, and, and we had sent a bill to the legislatures, I think a month ago, on that bill, that would take revenue cap authority away. Initially, the, the initial resolution, the initial bill would have costed Green Bay in the sixteen seventeen school year, almost a million dollars. It was revised, but if this bill passes, as it is now written, as it was passed by the Assembly, we will receive three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars less in sixteen seventeen in revenue limit authority. And initially, the Senate was refusing to take up this bill, but there was some horse trading done on legislation, that the Assembly passed some of the bills that the Senate wanted, so the Assembly did that, and I think this is the Senate's part of the horse trade, that they'll pass this bill, at least they'll take it up. So that's, that will cost us three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. The, this is kind of related, the, I don't know if you're familiar with the WIAA bill, it was a John Nigren bill that would make the WIAA
Oh.
subject to the open records law. That bill is not on the calendar, so that probably will not be taken up. And finally, there is one bill, AB 722, that passed the Assembly, is on the Senate calendar, that will require school districts whose schools have individual school websites to, within thirty days after the report cards are issued by the Department of Public Instruction, they will have to report, post the report card for their school on their website.
District website or individual?
On the school website.
We already have ours on.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I think that it's, it's very interesting, let's put it that way.
So, Michelle, any comment on any of that? You're familiar with all of those.
You know, I think that on a number of those issues, we certainly extended our voice and senators on behalf of the students and families in the district. It's been a, an interesting winter at the legislature. I know that we had legislators, we had three legislators join us at the parent advisory just recently, we had Representative Genrick and Representative Joel Kitchens from up by Sturgeon Bay, and, who also was a former board president in Sturgeon Bay, as well as a large animal veterinarian is his career path. And then we also had Senator Dave Hanson speak to us, and it was, it was very interesting to hear what was moving and what wasn't, and, and the efforts being made on behalf of public education this last Assembly session on both sides of the aisle. I would say that, that, you know, it's, it's interesting to, to listen to their conversations, because I think people are lining up in different ways and, and looking for opportunity to, to create bipartisan approaches, you know. Recently, they, both Representative Genrick and Senator Coles and Senator Hanson, you know, were part of sponsorship on a mental health bill that will afford more mental health support through Bellin and some of those pieces. So I think I, my takeaway is that anytime we can find opportunities to support our work and support our mission, we do have a number of legislators who are interested in that as well, so we're having those conversations too. You know, I think sometimes we wait to see what happens, and I think we, we have an opportunity, I guess, to offer things that we think will be helpful, because, you know, we, we change that, how things work, so that we can help them help us. So that's kind of a different approach that we've been talking about and thinking about.
Yeah, and we did send letters on the guns-on-school grounds, the, the crime reporting, the voucher thing, so I think being involved does help, and I think not only us, but school board members and superintents around the state, I, I think legislators heard from a lot of people, and from parents and different other groups.
A lot of parents.
Legal woman voters has been, statewide, has been very active on a lot of these same issues, so as, as the defeat of some of this damaging legislation shows, it, it does pay to get involved and speak out, rather than just saying, oh my gosh, throwing up your hands and not doing anything else. So I think it does help. And on the second item, the private school voucher funding, Lori, would you call up the letter that's on there? I have taxes on here, this was in the most recent school news magazine, and written by Dan Rossmiller, and I suggested that Michelle share that with some of her staff as well, because I think this is the best written explanation that I have seen on where private school funding is right now, public school funding of private school vouchers is right now. And I'm just going to read a couple of paragraphs, just for the, for the, for the public's understanding of this issue, and then make one final comment. Says, "Because lawmakers are not obligated to raise state aid to public schools and chose not to do so in two thousand fifteen sixteen, they have shielded the state from having to pay the cost of voucher expansion. Instead, they have effectively shifted the cost of voucher expansion to school boards, who now must decide whether to levy additional property taxes to replace C.A. transfer to voucher schools. School boards that chose to raise taxes will bear the burden of those decisions. This enables lawmakers to avoid responsibility or shift the blame onto school boards. This also means that property taxes, not equalized aid, will likely supply a larger share of school funding as statewide vouchers expand. There are only three ways to fund voucher expansion. One, have the state fully funded, two, funded from property taxes, or three, funded by taking state aid away from public schools. Having rejected option one, lawmakers are using a combination of options two and three. The latest debate suggests lawmakers are willing to substantially limit school board's ability to recoup lost aid transferred to voucher schools. It is clear that the end goal for pro-voucher activists is a statewide program with no enrollment caps, no income restrictions, and voucher payment amounts at the same level as the public school per pupil revenue limit. Far less clear is the state's ability to fund two separate school systems, one public, one private, given that the state has struggled to provide necessary resources to public schools." And then one final set of statistics, the change in the statewide average school revenue limit per pupil for public school students from two thousand ten, two thousand eleven to two thousand fifteen sixteen is a decrease per student of four dollars. The change in the voucher payment amount for a pupil in high school from two thousand ten, two thousand eleven to two thousand fifteen sixteen for vouchers for public school money going to voucher kids is an increase per student of one thousand four hundred and eighteen dollars. So we get a minus four dollars, they get an increase of one thousand four hundred and eighteen dollars in the last five years, last five winters. So unless anyone has any comments, that concludes my report.
On top of the services we already provide for them.
Yes, right.
Yeah, none of those have been.
Transportation, special education, EOL, right. So that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Next, we have district events, is there anything anyone wants to let us know about?
Looking over, seeing if they're waving or anything, I see no waving.
All right, so then, we'll move to system reports. First is teaching and learning facilitated by Katie Maloney.
Thank you, Brenda. We had robust discussion last week, we were updated on the elementary and secondary scheduling, work teams efforts, it was very interesting, and the next step, we're going to increase stakeholder participation in the process. Then we also had an update on the district wellness policy and plans to revise and expand it, again, with additional input from various stakeholders. And we have three action items, the first being, I move that the Head Start Self-Assessment Report, as presented, be approved.
One second.
Sandy?
Blacka?
Hi.
Wagner?
Hi.
Becker?
Hi.
Maloney?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Carried seven zero.
I move that the elementary art content essential documents, as presented, be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Becker?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Wagner?
Hi.
Warren?
Aye.
Blacka?
Carried seven zero.
And I move that the elementary general music content essential documents, as presented, be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Warren?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Blacka?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Carried seven zero.
And that concludes our report.
All right, thank you, Katie. So move to organizational support, that'll be facilitated by Chris Wagner.
Thank you, we have approximately eight recommendations, all but one, I believe, were discussed last week, and the first one that I believe was not discussed, and recommendation is that the change of a private school attendance area, as presented, be approved.
Second.
And could we have somebody maybe describe that a little bit, or talk about it?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Are there any questions?
I'd like to explain it for the public, what this is.
Oh, correct, redrawing of boundaries as two private schools are merging their area under statute one twenty-one point five one, we're required to address this issue, and then as well, section one twenty-one point five four, I believe, is what identifies when they have to request it, so they're within their April first guideline of that, looking forward to next year, and we're addressing that under the state, state statute.
They're parochial schools, we're trying to raise system here. Do you, would you know offhand what our taxpayers in our, through our district, pay for private school, parochial school transportation?
I, I would only be guessing at that information, I know that there's.
If you could find out later, I appreciate it.
I would, I would.
Eight hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah, I thought it was nine.
I think that's the number that we've thrown out past.
We used in the past.
Alan used to say eight.
Yeah, I haven't been able to verify it, I apologize, but I will see if I can find that out. And one of you did ask a question?
I think our public needs to know that, that goes on top of what Mr. Blacka's report about how we already in many ways subsidize parochial private systems, and now they want to take even more from our, our children.
Do you see this, in my head, I'm not seeing this increase our transportation costs, because we're shifting some to Resurrection, some to St. Matt's, or will it increase?
Yeah, it's a good question, Celeste actually asked that a couple days ago.
I would think you'd increase it, because some of the kids in Resurrection are going to, that would maybe walk there, and they go to St. Matt's, they're going to be bused to St. Matt's.
But then you'll have people that go to Resurrection that live right behind St. Matt's.
Yeah, we, right.
We haven't routed it out at this time, what I'd hope is that we're able to gain some already existing routes and be able to transport the students without much in the way of additional miles, because that costs money, and then as well, Ms. Celeste asked, is there going to be any implications financially, to which Jeremy Oldenburg indicated, worst-case scenario, we might have to add a route, add approximately thirty-six thousand dollars. Is it possible? Yes, is it probable? I hope not. We would stay in touch if that was the case.
But there's, we're required.
We're required to do this.
Right, so, so it would be another third, potentially, a new bus is going to be another thirty-six thousand dollars if we need one.
That's correct.
And that's a federal mandate.
Correct.
But just, just because the feds say we have to do, doesn't mean we can't talk about it.
No, 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 not at all, just, I'm just saying that more than the state is annoying us.
Right, right.
And then will they be, for the public, there will be one system then, is that one school with two campuses?
Correct, yeah, yeah, they're going to be doing a early childhood through fourth-grade campus, and then a fifth through eighth campus. Any other questions that I can answer for you?
Thanks, Andy.
Okay, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? We take a vote, Sandy?
Wagner?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Dorff?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Blacka?
No.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried six one.
Okay, now, under the Human Resources Area, I believe all these were discussed last week. First recommendation is that the revision to the employee handbook relating to vacation, as presented, be approved.
Second.
Again, just to review, this change would change, allow our employees to use their vacation, if they had it accrued or awarded, after three months of employment, rather than the six, as well as it would also apply to our trans, employees who transfer into a unit where there is vacation.
Sandy?
Blacka?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Carried seven zero.
Next recommendation is that the twenty sixteen dash seventeen health insurance rates for the two hundred fifty-dollar deductible plan, fifteen hundred-dollar high deductible health plan with health reimbursement account, and the minimum essential plan for active employees, as presented, be approved.
Second.
The recommendation, again, as we discussed last week, is to hold the insurance rates flat, both on health and dental, which we'll be reviewing. And the reason for this is that we do have a fond balance in our health plan. We have had good utilization and good claims, not, not excessive claims, and also, we anticipate some savings with the pharmacy change that was made last month.
Sandy?
Jeffries?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Blacka?
Aye.
Dorff?
Epstein.
Wagner?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried six one, or six and one abstention.
Next recommendation is that the twenty sixteen dash seventeen health insurance rates for the two hundred fifty-dollar deductible plan, five hundred-dollar deductible plan, fifteen hundred-dollar high deductible health plan with a health reimbursement account, the minimum essential plan, and the prescription plan for retirees, as presented, be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Becker?
Aye.
Blacka?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Dorff?
Epstein.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Carried six with one abstention.
The next recommendation is that the twenty sixteen dash seventeen dental insurance rates for active employees, as presented, be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Becker?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Dorff?
Epstein.
Wagner?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Blacka?
Aye.
Carried six with one abstention.
Next recommendation is that the twenty sixteen dash seventeen dental insurance rates for retirees, as presented, be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Warren?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Blacka?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Dorff?
Epstein.
Carried six with one abstention.
Next recommendation is that the rollover dollars for the fifteen hundred-dollar high deductible health plan with health reimbursement account for the twenty sixteen-seventeen plan year remain the same as the twenty fifteen-dash-sixteen plan year, one thousand for a single medical and two thousand for family medical, be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Wagner?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Dorff?
Epstein.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Blacka?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried six, one abstention.
And the next recommendation is that the retail walk-in to clinic benefit be added to the health insurance plan effective July 1, 2016, as presented, be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Blacka?
Aye.
Dorff?
Epstein.
Becker?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Carried six with one abstention.
And the next is that the consent items, as presented, be approved.
Second.
I have, I have two questions. Mr. Marshall, you're sitting there, I noticed under Certified Resignations, there's a high number of Spanish bilingual, and it wasn't all from one school, any sense of what's going on there?
Yes, I do. We have, we hire people who have a permit, they don't have the full license, and what we have to do is, if they have a license where they are not fully certified, or it's non-emergency license, it's conditional.
Move those apart a little bit.
They have to resign, and, because they cannot get a regular license. And so, if, so they, rather than be non-renewed, we have, we ask that they resign, which they do. And then, as long as they're progressing in school and in their program, if we still have a need to hire people, we try to get people who are fully licensed, and if we cannot, then we are able to, sometime after July, we are able to consider these people. But we also have to show evidence to the DPI that we're actively trying to recruit people with the regular license. So we have to show them our, you know, the fact that we've considered people who've applied, that we're doing reach-out before we bring these people back, that's why.
Would that include some of the special ed folks that are on there as well?
That, that is true, their permits, rather than an emergency license or a regular license.
Technical question. If, with their status right now, having resigned from our school district, could they go, apply to another school district and get hired without showing progress towards certification within the state?
They would have to be enrolled in a program, and, and they are. And to the best of our knowledge, they're successfully moving forward in their programs. But they could apply to another district who also has difficulty hiring bilingual people, and they, they could be hired.
Last question for me is, when, how long do we have to, to pursue, try to find somebody fully certified before we can rehire?
The law doesn't have a specific date, but we usually consider after July 1st the timeline that we follow, so that we're showing a reasonable amount of time to try.
And then we'll progress with that July 1st date?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, I have one other consent question?
Go ahead.
Okay. Under gifts, Andrew, maybe somebody over there knows, cheese box, cheese box, cheese box, in terms of donations, I'm thinking of Saturday night, why the skit here? Looking for the Pepsi at the end. So what, what was that about?
I don't know. The lawyer's over. I do know.
We are in Wisconsin, so let's get.
Oh, there's a wonder, must've been a-
There was. There were quite, there were a lot of cheese boxes.
Shriver Foods does an employee, I guess, promotion at Christmas time, where employees can buy something, and then the proceeds or the extra money for that particular product then gets donated to an organization that they select. This year, they selected the Green Bay School District. So those employees who bought those cheese boxes, the-
Oh, boxes of cheese.
Yes, they bought boxes of cheese, and then the extra proceeds were donated to the Green Bay School District.
So did we get the money or the cheese?
We get the money, they-
They got the cheese.
They get the cheese.
It's a win-win.
It is a win-win.
Good.
Yes, so we thank Shriver.
Oh, yeah.
All right, thanks, Melissa. Anything else? Sandy?
Jeffries?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried seven zero. Do you have a close session? I will read that motion. Special Board meeting, closed session, has been scheduled for Monday, March 14th, immediately following the adjournment of the regular Board meeting. Pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851(c), considering employment promotion with compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises with responsibility, and pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851(e), considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of a specific person's preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems or the investigation of charges against a specific person, except for paragraph B applies, which, discussed in public, would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data, or involved in such problems or investigations, to wit, personnel matters. And pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851(e), deliberating or negotiating, purchasing of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business, and other competitive bargaining or bargaining reasons, require a closed session, more specifically